Okay, thank you. Thanks.
I own this one.
Just like this?
Yes.
Number eight. Number eight. Yes. I'm ready.
Do we have the script?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm like... I forgot.
All right, script.
Well, good evening. I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board Meeting Committee of the Whole for February 24th, 2014 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Here.
Mrs. Butler? Mrs. Kostick?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Patel?
Here.
Mrs. Ross? Mr. Cloyt?
Here. Would you please stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the awards and recognition section. Dr. Lathan?
Lana Myers is going to come up and present this month's award.
Good evening. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and will reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winners' principals Patty Avery and Tom Blumer, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of our winner. Our nominator of this month's winner is Billy Robinson. Come on up, Billy. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Lynn Anderson-Loy at Woodruff. Come on up, Lynn.
Ms. Anderson-Loy is one of the hardest-working teachers I have ever met. She is always serving on various education-related committees, researching different solutions to problems that are occurring in the classroom and throughout the school, applying and receiving grants, and providing some of the best classroom instruction possible. She is a solution-driven teacher that does not accept anything less than success. She has provided me with mentorship for each of my four years as a teacher. During my first year, she was always there for me when I thought that I was not cut out for teaching. She would reach out to me and help me with whatever issues I was facing. She is an obvious leader to younger teachers and is a wealth of knowledge and expertise. She works hard and serves the local union in various aspects as well. Over the spring and summer, Lynn spearheaded a group from WCTC through the process of applying for and being awarded an amazing grant from the AFT. Only three schools in the nation were selected to receive this award. Throughout the process, Lynn has led the way in offering ideas of how to use the grant to further the opportunities and success for our students at WCTC. When something gets in her way to slow or stop progress, she looks for other paths to get the job done. She never quits or admits defeat and is inspiration to work with. We at WCTC could not be luckier to work with a teacher as amazing as Lynn.
Wow, you won't find me speechless too often, but to receive and get nominated for this award from Billy Robinson means the world to me. He's a former Marine. He served his country in Afghanistan. He protected us all. He's an easy one to mentor. When I found out that I got the award, I started thinking about all the teachers that I had in my educational experience, and boy, I've had the best. This is my second career, so I'm going to try to get 20 years out of teaching, and then I would have worked for 50 years. So that's a long time to work. I also have to thank my parents. They're in their 80s now. They would have loved to have been here. No, they're not in a nursing home. Actually, they're in Chicago, taking a trip. And so I think that's where I kind of get my moxie, just to keep going and striving and getting my strong work ethic from my mom and dad. But I sure appreciate my union and my colleagues, and thank you very much.
I would just like to add that Lynn is my neighbor and has been serving with Reverend Butler and I on the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee as well, and this is very well-deserved. And she's very tenacious and fast on the email.
All right. I believe we also have the Second Annual Step and Dance Competition, Saturday, March 1st at Manual Academy. And I believe it starts at 3:00 PM. The doors open at 2:00. $5 per person. And there's information on that. Is this on our website so that people can connect to it?
Yes.
It is on our website. So it should be very interesting. I've seen the group perform, and they do a great job. So if you want to go to an entertaining event on the 1st of March, that's one you can attend. Any other announcements? Okay. With that, could I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 10th, 2014 Board Meeting? Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions or revisions to the minutes? There being none, could you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyt?
Aye. Thank you. We now move to information items, and the first of those is remarkable rule number three, respect for finances. And I believe Dr. Kinney has a presentation on the county school facility sales tax. Dr. Kinney?
Okay, now we can get started. What I want to do tonight is take a little time just to review what this county school facility sales tax is about, a little bit about how we've arrived at working with this, a little bit more about what we will do here in District 150 should it pass, talk a little bit about the funding, and certainly mention that the local Trades Council has been very helpful with us in talking about this and supporting it. So I wanted to mention that for sure. All right. So why are we looking at another source of revenue? I think we've been pretty clear that what's happened to us in our property values have gone down, so our property tax revenues have gone down to the tune of about $6.6 million cumulative, including this year. Including this year, state aid has gone down $12 million. And again, what's happened is the state chose to appropriate 95% a couple of years ago, 89% last year, 89% this year, and we're being told to plan for 85% next year. So if you take next year in a combination with this year and the last two, in state aid, we'll have lost about $19 million in total. So these are revenues that make up about 65% of our total revenue in the school district and have always had a history of being very steady until very recently. So as we've looked at these declines in the revenue process, boards all over the county decided last spring that let's put this sales tax on the ballot for March 18th here coming up next month. The way the law works very simply is that boards representing at least 50% of the students in the county must pass a resolution for it to appear on the ballot. And in Peoria County last spring, 17 out of 18 districts passed it, representing 99.6% of the students. So it is on the ballot for next month. So one of the things that is important for people to understand is that the voters do have to approve this, and if it is passed, it'll generate about $9 million a year in District 150 and $18 million countywide. The way that works very simply is the money is collected countywide, this 1% sales tax is collected countywide, sent to the Department of Revenue, and then comes back to the school districts based on one formula only, and that is the percentage of students that each district has that resides in the county. And in our case right now, District 150 has about 49% of the students in Peoria County that go to District 150 schools. Wanted to point out, too, where you see the white stars, those are counties that have already passed it. There are 18 in total in this state that have already passed this. The law started in 2007, took a little bit of time to get going, but again, 18 have passed it already. And next month, March 18th, there are 16 more counties voting on this. I've kind of pointed out in the past that if you look at that radius of about 100 miles from Peoria, 12 counties have passed it, and you can see inside my box, there's another six or so, but a couple more very close. So it is on the ballot, and it is something that many school districts all over the state are looking at because of the kind of revenue that it is. Whoops. Okay. I like to just kind of remind people that this is a typical retail sales tax, but there are exemptions. And this is very important for people that are on fixed incomes. It does not apply to prepared foods or unprepared foods that you would buy in a grocery store. It does not apply to anything that you would title, like a car, a truck, a boat, an RV. It does not go against any drugs over the counter or vitamins, and certainly in some of our areas here in the county, farm equipment, parts and farm inputs, and then, of course, services. It is just, it just adds one cent on the things that are typically taxed already. And this is important. I think people need to understand what are eligible uses and what are not eligible uses. Obviously, some of our school districts in the county are looking at new facilities. In Knox County Galesburg area, Knoxville School District is building a new building. They're doing a lot of remodeling. That's one of the counties that has already passed it. So you can do additions and renovations. You can acquire land. You can take care of ongoing maintenance projects such as roofs, rooftop units, and I think those are very important to understand. If you need to hire an architect to help design a project, that's an allowable expense out of this particular fund. Durable equipment, probably the simplest explanation for that is if you have a smartboard and it's fastened to the wall, it's durable equipment. If it's on a free stand, it's not. So things that are fastened into classrooms, and that's very important for us because one of the key things that you'll see that we think are important are our classroom learning atmosphere. And so if we can create learning centers, STEM labs, those kinds of things, we think that's very important, and those are our fundable through this particular process. Obviously, our health, life, safety issues are eligible to spend this money. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Disabled access as security issues. Energy efficiency, again, very important because as we can make our buildings more energy efficient down the road, it saves on some of our current operational expenses. And I think that's important. What cannot be paid for out of this particular revenue source, any direct instructional costs, including payroll, benefits, and so forth, movable equipment such as computers, detached furniture desks, buses, textbooks, those cannot be funded. So when people talk about this sales tax, no, we're not going to go out and hire more teachers based on this particular fund. It does not work that way. Down at the bottom right-hand corner, I'm talking about the mechanics of the tax. Again, how this is accounted for is the law very specifically requires it can only be used for facility improvements or taking care of bonds that have been spent on facility improvements, and it must be accounted for separately. So there's a very transparent process. You're all familiar with our nine different funds, including the Capital Project Fund. This would be run very similar to the Capital Project Fund, so we can account for it totally separately and obviously will. By the way, if you have questions, please ask as we go because this is a time for you to get involved in this discussion. I like to remind people that certainly one way to use these particular funds, as I just mentioned, is you can actually abate property taxes based on bonds that have been sold in the past. But more important to us is that you can avoid selling bonds. We already know that we could sell as much as $11 million in health, life, safety bonds, and going forward, there would be a lot more because technically, roof repair would fall under a health, life, safety bond if you have a rooftop unit go out, or if you have a boiler go out. All of that would be under health, life, safety. So if we can avoid selling those bonds in the future, then we're not putting more additional expenses onto property owners in the city. So again, that's very important, and we understand because I think that's real key going forward. When we talk about abating the bills, our tax bills, this is what we voted on in November. This is the abatement that is occurring this May. We've taken about 11 and 1/2 cents off of the tax rate. Clearly, the board said, you know, when we agreed to do this, we thought the state would end up doing better than what they are to fund us, so this is obviously in jeopardy in the future. But if this sales tax were to pass, obviously, we do have the ability to do some tax abatement. And again, this is an exact picture of what we're doing for this spring. I wanted to show this because when we pay our bond and interest fund, and not all of this is construction, so people do need to understand that. We did sell some working cash fund bonds, but when we make our payments every year, we have to levy for the exact amount of what we have to pay out, other than, again, the last two years where we abated a million and 1/2. So you can see over the last 14 years, we've gone from about $7 million to a little bit above $16 million. A lot of that, what's in that last five or six years that you see there are certainly some of the remodeling that were done on schools like Northmore, Richwoods, Keller, Lindberg, and so forth, and then the building of Glen Oak and Harrison. So go ahead.
Dr. Kinney, question. Does that include PBC lease payments?
Yes. Yes.
So this is interest in principle on bonds we have issued and also the repayment of leases on properties that were funded by the Public Building Commission?
Yes, that is correct. So part of the idea here is if we're ever going to look at an alternative source of revenue that would allow us to eventually bring this back down and certainly avoid keeping it from going up by issuing health, life, safety bonds, this sales tax provides that opportunity.
As a percentage of our total budget, then, this represents about, what, 9%? Something like that?
Yeah, that's about right. Although, it's about 20% of the property tax revenues that we collect.
Okay. Thanks.
Whoops. It did work. Okay. Want to make sure also, again, that people do understand, and I apologize, some people have heard me talk about this a number of times, but people do need to understand, one of my biggest fears when people go to the polls is they don't really understand how this works. And I have heard that. I even heard that from a board member from across the river. She heard one of our presentations and was, you know, she didn't have that understanding, and I was a little surprised as a board member who voted on it last spring. But at any rate, it's important that we do understand how it works. One of the things that people do view this as is maybe a little bit fairer way to collect revenues because not only is it property tax owners, but it's certainly renters and other residents of the district or county that would be paying a retail sales tax, but also the IRS or Department of Revenue and state are telling us that about 14% of our sales taxes are being paid by people outside of the county that come in and visit. And for District 150, that 14% is right out about $1 million a year that we'd see in revenue sources from people outside. So why not, you know, at least have that opportunity to take advantage of that? So the people do need to understand, and there are a lot of people out there that do consider this maybe a little bit fairer way to collect revenues than everything going on property tax or property owners. This is just kind of a review, again, of when you look at this. So if you buy $100 worth of groceries at the grocery store, there is no increase because this doesn't apply. $50 worth of gas, yes, 50 cents. $15,000 car or truck, whatever the cost of the car or truck, there's no increase, and you can see the rest of those. So I think, again, it's important for people that are on fixed incomes to understand the impact. Again, this is kind of a review because I've already mentioned, certainly you can do capital projects, whatever they might be, pay-as-you-go, you can do that kind of thing. There are other ways to issue new bonds, and we'll talk about that at the end, to take care of our capital needs. But we can also certainly retire existing debt with, you know, by abating the taxes. And what's going to happen here is, you know, if you go to 18 different school boards, 18 different school boards have had some slightly different flavor of all of this because it's up to each individual district how they might want to treat the potential revenues. But again, we can mix and match. So if we want to do a lot of building, we can do that. We can do, we can mix in some tax abatement and so forth. Just a little quiz here, just to kind of set the stage when we talk about our learning centers and some of the things that we're dealing with, and not that I'm proud of this, please understand that. But so what's the oldest? Sputnik era, and I'm being a little broader in that term, Manuel Science Labs, Richwoods Science Labs, or President Obama? Actually, I think they're all very close, so here you go. Probably technically, if you looked at Sputnik I, I think it was 1958, National Defense Education Act came in right about that same time as a result of that. But by the time it got down to the local level, it was probably more like the early to mid '60s. And again, Manuel was built in 1961, and from what I understand, that's when those science labs were put in. Richwoods, actually, the first phase of Richwoods was built before that, but the wing that has the science labs, I understand, is 1958. So there you go. And again, I think it's important for us to think about the classrooms we're putting kids in and what can we do to engage them in a better way. So. Now, what would we do? And here's where, again, I want to make sure that the board is on board. When we talk about the different things, and this is kind of a broader picture of what we would like to do inside the district, certainly one of the things we've talked about a number of times is the issue of HVAC. I've said before, 60% of our classrooms right now are not air-conditioned, and to do what we'd like to do is probably in the $40 million range. Now, I have done not a very good job of talking about this. And why is because I talk about the AC part of it, the air conditioning, and what I haven't done justice to is the HV part, the heating and ventilation. People do need to understand that this takes care of those issues as well, and those issues we're going to have to deal with. When a boiler goes out, we've got to have heat, and many of our boilers are getting old. So this is an opportunity to look at improving our air quality through the ventilation, certainly having more reliable heat, and in many cases, much more efficient heat. So actually, we can get some payback out of that, and at the same time, add air conditioning. I think it's very important for people to realize that, you know, whether or not this passes, we are going to spend some of that money. We're not going to have a choice. We will need to do that. Same thing with the second line item. When we talk about health, life, safety issues, we need to do that. We're going to have no choice but to do those. We have $11 million registered with the state now. Now, we don't, it's not going to take all of that because at this point, we've been trying to do some of it on our own, and I think we've done some of it successfully. A lot of it, we're still going to need to do, and we have about a five-year window to get that stuff done. So we have about three years left to get that stuff done. Let me go back up to the top one in that price tag that I've mentioned there. We do know that we have some schools where the rooftops are getting older and aren't very efficient. And we do have some schools, I've been told Charter Oak, Mark Bills, for example, the air conditioning, the teachers there would like to see it be a little higher quality. And certainly, rooftop units that we have nowadays that are being built are much, much more efficient. So there's some sense to that. Get down to the third item there, and again, we've already talked about the science labs at the high school level. Peoria High is not on there. We were able to get a Capital Development Board grant and put on a whole new science wing at Peoria High. And it's phenomenal. I've got one picture I'll show you a little bit later. But science teachers at Richwoods and Manuel are jealous, and rightfully so. We're asking them to teach in pre-Sputnik labs. We know that as we've added a few labs here and there, they've been highly successful. They do engage the kids, and we ought to have, I mean, there are schools that specialize in the science and technology and engineering and math. The whole school specializes in it. So we'd like to have some learning centers that engage our kids and help them learn better. We talk about our technology infrastructure everywhere. You know, we need to keep working on our bandwidth as we add state testing that's going to be done online. We need to make sure that we can handle that the best way we know how. We need to enhance our communication systems. We'd like to have more telephones in some classrooms. It's a security issue. It would help us a lot. Energy efficiency, again, I've already talked about some about lighting, but, you know, we need windows badly. A perfect example is, again, out of our Capital Development Grant budget, we are going to be air conditioning Von Steuben here. We applied for a grant to replace the windows. The estimated cost through our architect was about $560,000 to replace those windows. The grant was for $250,000 of that. Unfortunately, we didn't get the window grant, so we're going to put it off. And also, unfortunately, in the design of the HVAC system for Von Steuben, we had to put one extra little alternate bid in there for just a little bit more redundancy in case the window grant didn't happen for us. So.
Another question there, Kenny. A large number of these energy projects can be funded or supplemented with the Act on Energy and other state... can be funded or supplemented with the Act on Energy and other state programs through DCEO, as I understand it?
Yes, and that, those help a lot. They don't pay for it. What they do is make the payback a shorter timeframe. And I don't have an exact number, but in the last year and a half or two years, Mike's here, we're in, well into the hundreds of thousands of dollars in rebates that we've already gotten. But there's still some upfront expense, so it'd be nice to have the upfront expense, a revenue source for that, so we can keep after those.
As I understand it, the more fuel you consume, the higher the potential rebate is. They're trying to drive down fuel consumption.
I believe that is the case, yeah, obviously, especially with electricity. But we even did, we even got a little DCEO rebate on taking care of some steam traps at Richwoods.
Same thing with natural gas, whose prices have gone up pretty strongly lately.
Yes. Obviously, the, the pay-as-you-go kinds of facility projects that we would like to look at, so, so there'll have to be a little bit of taking our turns. We'd like to have some new kitchens and some new gyms. A new gym would be very appropriate for Sterling. Theirs is a tiny gym, and it's a middle school. They need to have a better facility there for their PE classes and anything else they do. Cafeterias, in many cases, we have a situation where the gym and the cafeteria are the same room, and it creates a, a lot of scheduling issues. You're limited as to how, how you can teach PE. You might have to have larger classes because of it. But also, in some of our cafeterias, they're small enough that you end up, you know, you have kids that, that come to school at 8:30, and they're eating lunch at 10:30, because we've got to have enough different sections of lunch going through because of the size of the facility. So you can see there, Heinz, Whittier, Roosevelt, Franklin, TJ, and Woodruff Wilson are all places that we would like to address their cafeteria issues, you know, down the road. One of the things that I would add to that is that as we've looked at different cafeteria projects and, and the way we're doing our food service now, we're trying to spread out the preparation of the food to the local building as much as we can feasibly with the facilities we have, so that we don't have three high schools preparing meals for 27 buildings, and lunch being done at 9:00 and served at noon, you know, in some cases. So, if we can do some food prep at the local building, it's fresher for the kids, more appetizing and so forth. So when we talk about a kitchen, I'm sorry, cafeteria, we may be talking about a kitchen renovation as well. And certainly, not last on the list, but up here, our auditorium renovations, fortunately, again, through the Capital Development Board bunny at Peoria High, we're able to take care of their lighting and their sound. And we had a specific DCEO grant at Manuel, again, where we could take care of their lighting and sound. But the others, we do need, we have very old seats. Acoustics are not very good for how we're trying to use some of these auditoriums. And, and I know that many of the grade schools will go to one of the high schools for different plays or performances or concerts, and so certainly, at some point, we'd like to look at, at those as well, upgrading those auditoriums. And, you know, again, I, I think, one of the things I'm making an assumption, as we've had other discussions and visited the buildings, that probably the first couple of lines up there and, and the third line are more of a priority. I will tell you that if we were to decide to do that much air conditioning and heating and ventilation repairs at our buildings, it's not something that will happen in one summer. First of all, to have the architects get that, involved in that many different buildings and looking at the different trades and the different contractors, that's at least a two-year effort right there. And certainly, some of them that we put off would be ones that we would like to look at, what can we do about windows at the same time. So, I, I think in any of the first three lines, those would be as much as we could do in the first three years. Third line will be ongoing. We'd like to get a lab in every building as we start out, and then as we go down, you know, more pay-as-you-go projects, we could add more labs later. So, just wanted to kind of check with the board and certainly ask for your feedback. Doesn't have to be right now, but give that some thought as we, you know, go through this process over the next few weeks. The next, I just, I'm going to go over this just real quickly. Some people have asked, so why air conditioning? People need to keep in mind, when we do talk about air conditioning, that we're not talking about the same kind of building that we had 30 or 40 years ago, where you could prop all the windows open and open the doors and get a lot of breeze flowing through the buildings. With the security issues that we have, that's not possible. So, as we keep our doors closed and our buildings secure, the, the air movement isn't good, so, you know, we need to consider treating the air, whether it's air quality, temperature of the air, whether it's too hot, too cold, or whatever. You can Google why it's important to have air conditioning in schools, and there's just thousands of resources. So I tried to hit just a few. Certainly, there's evidence of improved student achievement, better attitude, fewer discipline problems when kids are comfortable. I've talked to a few teachers, and they can tell you, for example, Peoria High has, because of the grant, has air conditioning this year. And I've heard from teachers from there and administrators from there, they felt like this year got off to a much, much better start, because kids were comfortable being there. And I can tell you, some of our classrooms that were on second or third floors, and some of our buildings that were in the 90 to 100 degree range, not a lot of learning goes on. And, and here's a little bit of evidence that shows that. Certainly, even for our staff, there's, it's a better working condition for them. They have a better sense of, of personal safety and so forth when they know that we're supporting the atmosphere they're teaching in. And I just, I had a personal experience in, in my former job where CAT spent $61 million putting in a tri-generation plant at Mossville for the purpose of air conditioning their factory. So, you know, we ought to be talking about schools, I think, somewhere in here. Amazon, three years ago, spent $52 million to upgrade its warehouses with air conditioning. So, if we can take care of factories and warehouses, maybe it's okay to talk about it for schools as well. All right. I'm going to go through these. I'm not going to talk about each one of these. We'll put these on our website. But we've got different plans for different schools. And I'll go through just a couple as examples. Certainly, at Richwoods, it is not air-conditioned except for a small part of it. We've talked about the science classrooms. We've talked about the needs in the auditorium, and there, the, the, both the lighting and sound are pretty critical. We'd like to have a hallway that connects the main facility with the auxiliary gym, because it will offer some energy efficiency in our different entrances, a little bit of security, and certainly a pathway for kids to go from one end of the building to the other. Yes, at some point, it would be, you know, we wouldn't mind looking at some of the outdoor athletic facilities at our high schools and middle schools both, because at our middle school especially, they don't have much. Keller, we air-conditioned last summer, but we'd like to look at their, their kitchen and, and do something there. They've got a very tight amount of space, so we'd like to do something with, with a kitchen for them. They're going to need a new parking lot. The property across the street, we did auction it off. It has been sold, is, well, pending city council approval of, of their zoning changes and so forth. So, at some point, we're going to need to add a lot for, for Keller. And then obviously, the, the labs. And I won't go through all of them, but in some cases, you know, Heinz, and I've got a picture of it, just, just a sample picture for a new kitchen. Again, you can see the different schools. Peoria High, we've done quite a bit with. One of the things we didn't get to with the project there is the whole front side of the building. We'd really like to acid clean it and reseal it, and, and to make it look like a new 100-year-old building. And the various schools, I, I think I have all 27 up here. There's the last two. Thomas Jefferson, maybe just a little bit about it, and, and I've got a picture, so I'll, I'll wait for that particular picture, so you can see some things we're talking about there. Tried to get just some pictures of some of the learning labs. This is very similar to the Paxton Patterson type of lab. You know, these kinds of settings for the people that, that haven't been into some of these rooms are very, very engaging. They're, they're very well-designed. They have the right kind of materials that go with them, so it gets kids to do a lot of hands-on learning. This is actually taken from a, a middle school science lab. It's a, obviously a private school, and you see all the plaid skirts and all the white shirts, but it's nice to have things like this that engage our kids. This is just a simple intermediate-grade classroom, where in some cases, we can improve the learning atmosphere in a given classroom just by doing some things with the floor. Again, another learning lab, this is in a science lab where there's a lot of technology involved. This is very similar to our Health Occupations lab that we have at Woodruff, but these are the, again, the kinds of settings that do engage kids and I think would be very helpful to our kids and can be funded through the sales tax. This is actually at Woodruff. This is our Woods lab. Again, it does get the kids hands-on, and that's what we, we're after. This is one of the new labs that, I, I apologize, it's a little dark. This is one of the new labs at Peoria High, and you can see the fume hoods in the back, but the work counter here that you see, there is, you know, a gas line, there's water, there's electricity, so that as they do different kinds of demonstrations or experiments, that's all there available. In our very old labs, over a period of time, we've had to shut down the gas line, shut down the water lines, because it's easier to do that than, than to dig in and, and fix them right. So, that's the kind of thing that we'd like to do going forward. This, again, is just Richwoods, just to show how a front hallway would look. And again, as you can see, you get your airlocks for, again, better energy efficiency, better security, because kids are, and, and adults are using different entrances there. And again, on the Richwoods, we'd like to, to look at the air conditioning and look at that auditorium. And there are some internal, interior repairs that are necessary that we've put off. This is Thomas Jefferson. Down in the right-hand corner, it's kind of a dark red. That's actually 10 classrooms. I know there has been discussion on and off about making Thomas Jefferson a K-8 building. The, and there are lots of benefits to that. Certainly, it might help us to realign some of our attendance areas. But this is a way to show how you could put in 10 classrooms on that property, where it says, if you can kind of read in a, in a medium color cafeteria, seats 280, that's currently the gym. If you're going to put in 7th and 8th grade, they need to have a bigger gym. That gym is not big enough to do much with when you have those junior high kids. The current cafeteria is between the rectangular part and that round part, the cafeteria is in that, that, there's, there's a little area there that's very odd-shaped. It's just not conducive for what they need there, so they're in desperate need of a, of a cafeteria anyway. And their library is quite small, so you can kind of see an existing courtyard, and there's kind of a red, five-sided shape there. We would look at expanding the library into that courtyard. But this is something that, you know, if we're serious about looking at making it a K-8 building, this is what it's going to take. And something along this line is probably a, a $5 to $6 million project that, again, could be funded at some point down the road with, with this sales tax revenue. This is Rolling Acres, and for everybody's benefit, this is, again, something we're putting on with part of the rest of our money from Capital Development Board at, at Rolling Acres to do cafeteria. We looked at their gym, and they were sharing the space between the gym and the cafeteria. We chose to put on a new cafeteria because it was less expensive, and their gym is really pretty good. I'll just mention, I don't have a picture of it, Calvin Coolidge, we did the opposite. They were sharing that space, pretty lousy space, but it was really a lousy gym. So we, we're putting on a new gym there. It is a little bit more money, but again, we're using those Capital Development Board funds, which we're not going to see for a long, long time. So, now, I, I took this cafeteria and just kind of imposed it on Heinz. There's a very logical place that we could put that. Heinz is one of those that has a lot of different lunch periods, because a lot of kids in that building. Heinz, we'd love to give them a cafeteria and a kitchen, and we'd love to do some other interior renovations. We might even try to sneak on a classroom or two, because they really are fairly crowded. So, this is just a picture of door security. One of the things that we would like to continue to work on, and we've done some at, at our various buildings, where you set up a system where the parents are funneled into the office during the school day. It just makes good sense. Actually, this particular picture doesn't really do that, but, but you can see the, the card reader at the right, and the ability to lock the doors down during the school day is very important in any of our security. There's actually a card reader there. This is the backside of Peoria High. Now, as we talk about all of this, one of the things that people ask, and I'll mention, one of the districts that's done something like this with the sales tax is Macon County and its Decatur. They are rebuilding their two high schools there into state-of-the-art facilities to the tune of $73 million. And it's all being funded through the sales tax revenue. It's not going on the backs of the property owners. Now, how did they do that, or how are they doing that? Well, I wanted to get this information in front of everybody. You can sell what they call alternate revenue bonds. A revenue bond is a bond that you sell where the, whatever you're going to do for the project, you, you're guaranteeing that you have a revenue source that will cover the expense of those bonds. And this is alternate, because again, it's being funded through the sales tax rather than through other ways that the district could have funded it, again, on the backs of property owners. So, we would have the ability to sell probably in the neighborhood of $50 million in bonds over a 20-year period, if we chose to do this, so that we could get some of those first three items done upfront or done more quickly. And again, that would take most of the first three years of, in time to do all of those kinds of facilities. But we would be able to do that. The cost would be between 4.4 and 4.8 million per year, depending on a number of factors, but mainly the interest rate at the, at the time the bonds were sold. So, that leaves us, if we have a $9 million amount of revenue annually, we're using about half of that. You would be able to use the other half to do some tax abatement, and certainly to do other pay-as-you-go projects. Some of those might be those kitchens, or cafeterias, or a gym, or roofs when they come along. And by the way, from what I understand, if this were to pass next month, we could actually be looking at trying to issue the bonds and get this process going as early as this summer. So I've covered a lot, and certainly want to answer any questions?
Anyone have questions? It's a lot to take in.
Dr. Kenny, I suppose one question people might be asking themselves is, is the state going to use this as a means of shirking off their responsibility to pay for school facilities? Are they trying to do that by saying, hey, counties, pass a 1-cent sales tax that could be used towards improving your schools?
Well, that's, that's a really good question. And, and certainly, some of the revenues that we do get locally do mix into the state aid formula, such as our property taxes. So, hadn't really quite thought about it this way, but I suppose as property taxes go down, then the state's supposed to kick in more to make up for it, so maybe that's a, a side benefit here. But right now, the collection of these sales tax revenues does not impact any other formula that we have. So, you know, Mike and I and Carla, we've all talked about it many times, you know, we don't trust the state, so this is one that they can't touch. So, for that, we like it a lot. Again, it's an alternate revenue source. Now, keep in mind that right now, they don't really give us revenues specific to capital projects, unless it's a Capital Development Board grant. For example, when we file to get health, life, safety bonds, all they're doing is giving us permission to go out and sell the bonds on our own. They're not giving us any money. So, from that standpoint, there really isn't a specific guaranteed revenue source anyway from the state to help with these kinds of projects.
Other questions?
A long answer, sorry. A long answer, sorry.
Ms. Wolfman?
I don't know if it's a question as much as a comment, I just want to reiterate that, um, we got a lot of information tonight on how this money could be used and those are just possibilities. There are no decisions have been made by the board, no priorities have been set. In fact, all the board has done so far is received information, we really haven't even had a discussion with each other on, uh, what would be the priorities. Um, but I, I think it's important to say again that some of these things, like the health, life, safety are, are things that we're gonna wind up eventually having to do. A lot of these are wish things, but if we don't have this alternate revenue, then we may wind up having to sell bonds, which is definitely gonna directly affect the property tax rate. And, um, so it's, it's not only a way to avoid increasing the rate, but you also gave us examples of how we could possibly decrease
Right.
the rate. So I think that's important to remember because everybody's gonna have different ideas of how you should use the money. I know, I talked to a lot of people who have children in school now who think air conditioning is great. But I also talked to a lot of people more my age whose kids are out of school who say, "I didn't have air conditioning when I went to school." So it's, it's important to, um, to remember that, how it could affect the property taxes because that's, that's where everybody loads all of the, the, um, burden. And, uh, to me, this is a different way of being able to get some revenue without putting all the burden on the property owners.
And, and I'll remind you, you guys have told us, as we've presented some of the health, life, safety issues that we have had, that you're not at this point or at that point willing to go out and sell bonds, you want us to try to keep working with it. Well, we also, you know, two or three years ago, had a little more hope, uh, that state revenues would straighten out. And I, I will guarantee you, as time goes on, uh, that would be a tougher and tougher thing to try to handle, to try to internalize, uh, those expenses, it just is gonna be impossible. So I, I think you're gonna have to look at finding some other way to pay for these if this doesn't pass.
Other questions or comments? Just to clarify the health, life, safety, uh, could you explain how that mechanism works and why we're required to do that?
Sure, uh, bottom line, uh, well, there, there are a couple of different ways, but, uh, one of the, one of the main ways that this occurs is every 10 years, every building is required to have, uh, an evaluation done by an architect or an engineer and they call that a 10-year resurvey. Uh, when they go through the building, they will identify issues. Some of them may be code changes that we have to follow. Sometimes code changes occur and we don't have to follow them, we're grandfathered in. I mean, you can't ask, expect us to raise a roof and have a taller ceiling inside. So, uh, but there are issues that come up, there are repairs that do need to be made, uh, that they will cite. Uh, and, and these are all issues that could relate to some form of safety for, uh, kids or staff. So then those are all registered with the state and the state then, uh, and, and when they're registered with the state, the architects or engineers put a price tag on those repairs and, uh, then the state will say, yes, take care of those. They give us a timeline of five years for all of it to be done, uh, and, uh, give us the authority to sell the bonds. The other way that it can occur is when a roof leak happens and it wasn't on our 10-year resurvey, we can have the engineer or architect file an amendment with the state that says this is an emergency health, life, safety project and, uh, by filing that amendment, then the state will give us the, the authority to sell a bond at that point as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I had a couple thoughts. As I understand it, every county in the state of Iowa has this tax, is that correct?
Yes.
So the state of Iowa has enabled its counties to do this and every county does that now, right?
Yeah, there's a little bit, I, I, and maybe I shouldn't say
Correct?
Yeah, th- that is correct. They went through a little bit of turmoil after they had it because the state tried to take over and I think that went back to the county rule.
And, and I think if you take a look at the number of construction jobs that might come out of this, and I, I talked to some of the people who are involved in it, this is 200 to, i- if all the schools in the county started issuing bonds or even taking this money to be spent for construction, you're talking about 200, 300-plus construction jobs full-time in the county.
And, and that's why I mentioned right at the start, uh, about the Trades Council being in support of this. Because, uh, that, that number might be a little high, but it certainly is 150 to 200 range, depending on what people are paid. Uh, but if you think about 18 million per year, half of it going to buy merchandise, uh, somebody's got jobs there and if you take the other 9 million, even at, you know, 50,000, that's, you know, uh, 180 jobs or something along those lines, so.
If you issued bonds to do that, you could do that
Right, right.
immediately.
Yeah, so.
One other thing I heard at the IASB in Chicago two years ago, and that was, a classroom with the windows open, about 10% of everything the teacher said is not heard by the students. In other words, it has an impact on their ability to just hear what's going on and sit in their own classroom. It's not just comfort, it's the fact that they don't get a chance to hear everything that's being said simply because of the outside noise and distraction. So that, that was a very interesting aspect of that, I'd never heard that before, so.
I might also mention, uh, that we are interested, we've worked with the Trades Councils and we are interested in continuing to work with them through project labor agreements, that if this passes, certainly we all want to see as much of that work done locally to keep that money here locally
Right.
spent locally and, uh, so we will have something for you at the next board meeting, uh, to talk about that. We, we do appreciate, uh, what those Trades Councils have done, uh, to help support this. And of course, for them, it's, it's a lot of jobs, so.
Okay, any quest- other questions, comments? Okay. Did you have anything else this evening or is that
That's it.
covered? All right, thank you. Uh, we move now to the consent agenda. Uh, do I have a volunteer to read the consent agenda tonight? Would someone care to do that? Ms. Patel, would you like to do that? You, you don't have to, if you, if you're not of good voice there.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Tonight on the consent agenda, we have item one, gifts to the school district. This meeting totaling $9,612.94. The proposed action is that the Board of Education accept the following donations and send letters of appreciation to the donors. Uh, granite balance table and glassware washer valued at $8,600. Um, buy Solazyme to Richwoods High School, 250 by J. Brad Shaw Strilo to Whittier Primary School. Hats, scarves, gloves and jackets valued at $150 by Anita Trusillo to Whittier Primary School and art supplies valued at $612.94 by Dick Blick over in Galesburg to Sterling Middle School. Uh, item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three, the human resources report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment compensation, performance resignation, retirement or discharge of an employee. Item number three, payment for travel. I'm sorry, item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, approval of addendum to the intergovernmental agreement with the Peoria Public Library. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached addendum allowing all District 150 students access to a Peoria Public Library card. Item number six, purchase of property in the Peoria High School area. The proposed action is that the Board of Education is asked to approve the purchase of the following property. 1809 North Ellis, PIN number 18-04-101-025 for $90,000 including relocation. And item number seven is the Laredo Taft Field School Contract. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the Laredo Taft Field School Contract for 8th grade students attending Washington Gifted School. Laredo Taft is an outdoor educational program sponsored by the Northern Illinois University. All 8th grade students will be attending the five-day trip, March 23rd to 27th, 2015, at a cost of $210.22 per student. Activities will include water study, team building, forest ecology, pioneering Native Americans, birds, mammals, weather, astronomy, night hikes, campfires, geology, survival and crafts. Parents pay the fee for students to attend, but no child is denied attendance due to the fees. That concludes the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, and, uh, just to backtrack one step, um, purchase orders over $2,500, I failed to bring that up. Dr. Kenny, if there were any questions or comments on that before we move ahead? There being none? Okay, thank you. So, uh, would anyone on the board care to have any of the items on the consent agenda pulled for a separate vote? Okay, um, could we have a motion then to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, uh, any discussion or questions? Ms. Wolfman?
I, I just wanted to mention the addendum to the intergovernmental agreement with the Peoria Public Library. That allows our students who live in West Peoria to have access to public library cards, which my understanding is the students in West Peoria, to this point, have never been able to get a library card in the Peoria libraries without paying a fee. So this is going to allow our students to be able to get library cards and use our libraries, um, and I'm assuming in the whole alliance system. Um, so that's a, a, a great thing for us to work out with the library. And the Laredo Taft is a field trip 8th grade, that's something that happens every year, correct?
Correct, and they always get it approved a year in advance.
Okay, so this is actually for the 2015 trip?
This is for 2000, yes, March, um, 2015.
Okay, thank you.
And we appreciate the cooperation of the Peoria Public Library Board for that. That's, that's a great thing to have that available. Uh, anyone else, any questions? Any further discussion on that? All right, would you call the roll please on the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Ms. Ross?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, item number eight is polled, which was the revocation of board probation. Number nine, please.
Item number nine is expulsions. The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated February 24th, 2014 be approved as amended.
Would you call the roll please?
Aye.
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 Students expelled by the board are referred to by number, thereby ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students has been decided in executive session.
Thank you. We've now come to the place in our agenda where members of the public may address the school board on any topic. Please come to the podium and give your name for the benefit of our minutes. Time limit for any one speaker is two minutes, uh, as this is a committee of the whole meeting, and the time limit for any one topic is eight minutes. No person less than 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by his or her parent, guardian or teacher, except with unanimous consent of the board. And our first speaker this evening is Nidra Tate.
Um, good evening, my name is Nidra Tate, I stay at 205 East Arcadia. And, um, tonight I came because, first of all, I would just like to say, I'm, you know, I understand supporting people and supporting situations and things you believe in for a good cause or for whatever the reason. And I'm not saying those who have been supporting the principal of Charter Oak School are wrong, you know, and I'm not saying I know every detail about it, but from what I've been following, I'm really upset at the fact that a lot of blame is going towards administration on behalf of a grown individual who is in a position of authority and was at a school who did not follow proper protocol, was properly investigated by the state and was disciplined because of his actions. Now, wait a minute, first off, the bottom line is this, wrong is wrong. And when the kids do wrong in school, they get disciplined, whether they get suspended, expelled or get kicked out of the classroom. And it's nothing different for somebody else just because of their position and how long they've been in that position because, especially for the length of time you're in a certain position, you definitely should know better. And that doesn't mean you're a bad person, because we all make mistakes, but it's time for these grown people in this district to step up and take responsibility for their actions, quit pointing the finger at the administration who has nothing to do with the choices that you make and start setting that example for the kids in order for this district to change. I mean, people come down here and tally up when their friends get in trouble or when something happened, but how many of you all was there when Albert Phillips got shot in the head? Now, that was an innocent mistake right there, that was somebody who was innocent who got killed. And nobody came and supported his family other than what I saw with Dr. Lathan and Dr. Kennedy, who was just, just came into the district. And then you want to sit up and portray the administration as if they're, they're the reasons why the problems are, you know, is what's happening, come on, we're adults here.
That's right.
Take responsibility, own up to the fact of what you've done and just do what you need to do to make it right next time. Quit blaming other people for your mistakes.
Thank you, ma'am. Diamond Matthews? Okay, thank you. Aquacia Stanford?
Hi, my name is Aquacia Stanford and I live at 205 East Arcadia. I just wanted to thank, I just wanted to take the time to thank the Board of the Administration for many positive changes that have been occurring over the past two years. I have several friends who have gone to Woodruff and successfully completed their program in our Tenderegacy Beauty Institute, which is where I plan to go when I graduate for my, for this summer. I am especially thankful for the staff and manual who have worked with me through some difficult times in the beginning of the year. I can recall years ago when I felt like no one cared at the schools or the board, but thanks to the new administration, so many others have, have hope for their future because of the efforts made to make change and for that, thank you.
Kathleen Duffenbaugh?
I'm Kathleen Duffenbaugh and I live at 4525 West Rockville Drive. I want to talk a little bit tonight about integrity. Like to talk a little bit about reliability. People who know their roles and live it every day. Remembering your promises that you make, keeping those promises. There's been a lot of talk in the last couple of months about what the CEO of Caterpillar would do in this situation. Quite frankly, I don't think that that's relevant, we're not talking about tractors, we're talking about children and their lives and their futures. I'm really tired of coming to these meetings and having very little respect shown to the parents who really take the time to sit down and think about what they want to say when they stand up here to you and really feel like you don't even hear us. I'm really tired of it. Promises, promises were made when you were all elected that are sitting around this horseshoe. Promises to me, to everyone behind me that pay taxes in this city on how things were going to go with our district. I'm a graduate of District 150 and I'm here to tell you that 35 years ago, this school district was not in the shape that it's in today. And in the last three years, it has gone downhill quickly. You can set and whitewash your picket fence with all your little projects that you'd like to tat on your back that you've done, but I would like to ask you, Dr. Lathan, where are the achievement scores of our schools headed? And if you think a 1% and a 2% increase a year is where you want to be, I'm sorry, that is not what I want for our schools or my grandchildren. You want to hold people accountable, you need to start holding yourself to the same standard that you want to hold these people to, because you're not doing it. And the board, they're not making you do it. And ladies and gentlemen, we are the ones who put you in those chairs. You need to start doing your jobs.
Thank you. Morris D. Jackson?
Good evening, my name is Morris Jackson. I reside at 3713 Carmel Avenue, Peoria, Illinois. Thank for allowing me the opportunity to voice my concerns that pertain to the present state of the Charter Oak Primary School. First of all, I'd like to commend the board on, on the manner in which you handled the investigation of Charter Oak's former principal, John Wetterhauer, and the teachers involved in the issues regarding the inconsistent test scores and the manner in which it was administered. Even though there were those who felt Dr. Lathan had a personal vendetta against Mr. Wetterhauer, I am not one of those. I commend Dr. Lathan and the board in resolving the matter in a swift and professional manner. A major concern I have with Charter Oak are the books that are being given to our children by the Look It's My Book Program. One of the particular books entitled "The Blood-Hungry Spleen" by Alan Wolfe. I provided you with copies of a couple of the poems and illustrations that I find both offensive and inappropriate. Doctor, Mrs. Cushing, who was responsible for the books, uh, when I asked her where they came from, she informed me she didn't know. I therefore contacted Ms. Johnson and she stated that she was shocked by what I had brought to her attention and immediate steps will be taken to ensure no books of this explicit nature explicit nature would ever be handed to our children. Someone made a statement that since Mr. Witterhour's removal from Charter Oak, there have been numerous disciplinary issues with students. Those disciplinary issues were there long before Mr. Witterhour ever left Charter Oak. My daughter informed me she was having trouble learning in her fourth-grade class because the children were so unruly, and the only thing the teachers have to do, is time to do, is address children's behavior. I made an unannounced visit to my daughter's classroom, and when I walked in, I was totally shocked by the way the students were behaving. I guess the best way to describe it is like they were acting like animals in the zoo. I spoke to the principal and had him transfer my daughter immediately. I do commend the board and Dr. Lathan on the manner in which you've handled it. Things are not finished at Charter Oak, and you need to keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Brenda Wilson? Ms. Wilson, I believe you spoke before.
I have.
And I owe you an apology.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
In our meeting at Von Steuben, I asked you to do some things that I think you found demeaning, and I did not intend that. And I would tell you that I was embarrassed by that, and I feel like I owe you and a public apology for that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that, Mr. Floyd. I really do. Thank you. I forgive you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Please proceed.
My name is Brenda Wilson, and I stand before you representing the community of Charter Oak Primary School. I want to say that we do not condone cheating at all, and I don't believe that Mr. Witterhour would condone cheating either. And it's sad to think that we wouldn't want this district to succeed and to be quoted, I don't want to say quoted, but the fingers have been pointed at us that we want you guys to fail and that we don't want this district to succeed, and that is not true in any way, shape, or form. We just feel like we've been unjustly treated. And here are a couple of examples. Things keep getting floated to me from out of the woodwork. In March of 2012, an administrator slapped a student at Treewind in the face. I think it was a principal. I just got the word administrator with it. There was an actual police report that was given to me, and that administrator got a four-day suspension. In February of 2013, a teacher landed in jail for sexual relations with a student at Manuel High School. That principal is still there. Those situations are criminal, and arrests were made, and I feel like Mr. Witterhour and Charter Oak have been treated like criminals, and I don't think it's fair, and we just feel like it's been unjustly treated. And so how could we not take it personally, and how could we not think that it is a personal vendetta? In August of 2010, in your kickoff rally, Dr. Lathan, I absolutely loved a quote that you made. I think, I don't want to say quote, because you just said it. "We have to meet people where they are and assist them in developing plans to get them to the next level." That is the superintendent that I would like to see every day, and that was your kickoff rally in 2010, and it doesn't feel like you want to get people to the next level when you pull them out and treat them like criminals. Mr. Witterhour didn't condone cheating. In September of 2010, you were in an interview, and you said, "We are responsible for providing an education, and parents are responsible for supporting us, but how do we support you when we feel like we're unjustly treated?" And the last thing you said was amazing. "We work for the children, and if our children leave, we won't have a job, and if we fail our children, we should be ashamed." And right now, it feels like you're failing our children. And you could bring John back to Charter Oak, and you could bring our teachers back to Charter Oak. It's not too late.
Mimi McDonald?
Now, you're not going to apologize to me, are you? That would just ruin everything.
I would tell you, if I owe you one, I will apologize to you.
Okay. Well, you know what? I was very impressed that you did that. It was very human, and I like seeing it. Anyway, my name's Mimi McDonald, and first of all, I'd like to know how many of the board members have actually been to Charter Oak since the principal has been removed, because I hear it's real chaos there. And I am asking each of you to go to the school and see what is going on with the special education children for their own good. Secondly, I hope this is being streamed, because I don't think parents get it, because I sure didn't. Our security is now allowed, not allowed to carry guns. I don't, I don't get it. I mean, kids are going in the schools with guns every day across the country, shooting teachers, shooting other pupils, and we're leaving our students wide open? I just don't get that. Instead of buying phones with your money, can we, you know, have some armed security instead? You know, I mean, the teachers, they'll have phones. We need armed security. We're in a different day and age. I can't believe you're allowing this to happen. Third of all, I'd like to say that I've been really thinking about this, and with all the controversy, whether it's the city council, or it's here, or it's in the newspaper or whatnot, if I was sitting on that board, I'd think one thing, and that thought would be, you know what? I don't agree with the public at all. Don't agree with them at all. I think they're totally wrong, but you know what? They were the ones that put me here. So therefore, I would say to my other six board members, you know what? I agree with you, but they put me here. This is the way they want me to respond, and since they elected me, I'm going to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Harvey Burnett?
First of all, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I'm Pastor Harvey Burnett. I represent a number of organizations, one including The Urban Cure at urban cure.net. It was only twenty-seven students, is the response that I got from someone who was talking about the Charter Oak incident. Well, I rise to voice my support for the superintendents of Dr. Grenita Lathan and uphold the school board's decisions in both discipline, method of operation, and progress for our children under her tenure. This group, Change 150, claims to have the best interests of district employees at heart. They also claim that there's a climate of fear and intimidation that's not representative of the district of Peoria. Well, I asked the public to seriously examine why this group really wants change. They say it's because of the people leaving District 150, and the employees who are scared out of their wits, but I ask, are either of those things really the case? I asked, are those actions because they can't control the agenda of District 150? I strongly believe that it's due to the latter. I could speak about things such as, could they possibly be complaining because the district under Dr. Lathan has had balanced budgets over the last three years? I could ask, could they possibly be complaining because the district now has modern technology and facilities that facilitate the learning of all of our children, such as smart boards, laptops? And predominantly, poor and black students, minority students, you now have the opportunity to use certain things that they never did have before. I just stopped and asked this group, do they really want change when those same students were suffering from technology disparity just a short time ago? I could go on. I could further ask, could this group possibly be complaining now because our students have new and updated textbooks from which to learn, as opposed to, in many cases, formerly twenty-year-old textbooks? I would ask this group, could they possibly be complaining because they are arguing because of our families can now engage in parent universities, which they could not before? There's many more things I would like to say, and I will give a press release of a, not a condensed version of this, to the media for their review. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Cruz?
Four months ago, Lathan hatched a plan to limit the number of foias Terry and I can submit. First, she declared us to be a group, thus cutting in half the number of foias we could do as two individuals. Then she made our group status retroactive to January 2013. Then she declared us to be recurrent requesters based on numbers totally unrelated to the truth. Our additional punishment is a twenty-one-day waiting period instead of the five to ten days for a foyer response. In January 2014, I wrote a foyer pushing Lathan into admitting that she had no proof. The foyer response states that the law does not require a public body to answer questions, so Lathan believes she is not obligated to answer questions that begin with "how many." Since questions cannot be answered, the foyer response was to return to me all our foias with some duplicates thrown in. However, Lathan was unable to produce more foias than we had written. Any of you who are interested in proving the truth can count the number of our foias the district has on file. These are the answers to the "how many" questions. As a group, our quota is seven requests in a seven-day period. Together, we never submitted more than three in a seven-day period. Our quota is fifteen in a month. We never submitted more than seven a month. The quota for a year is fifty, and the district's letter stated we submitted over fifty. The truth, I submitted twenty-seven, and Terry submitted twelve, for a total of thirty-nine, eleven fewer than the quota for just a group. Now tell me, was Dr. Lathan, how was Dr. Lathan able to recall, call us recurrent requesters when the district, according to the foyer response, has no record of our totals? This duplicity makes it easier for me to believe duplicity or reports of testing irregularities are concerned. Board members, whose numbers do you believe? And thank you for the two of you who responded to me.
Savino Sierra?
I live at Seventy New East House Stanley on the far south side. I'm going to go to another...
Mr. Sierra, could you pull the microphone closer? It's hard to hear you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm going to go to another thing, aisle of District 150, because these people that are talking about Charter Oak, and that gives them time to say their piece. I think I was one of the first ones that ran into the superintendent, when she went to visit Treewind. One of the people that she got rid of, she was showing her around. And I told her, I wished her luck, but I said, "But I'll give you a chance." And I gave her a chance, and she hasn't showed me what she was supposed to be doing. You know, I keep saying, "The U. Board members voted for her because she was advertising that District 150 needed a change." I can say a lot of the change was negative for our district here. And the treasurer there, he's talking about how they want to get some more money so they can do this and that, and on our buildings, you know, when they should have done that a long time ago. And I was after him to change the lighting system over at Von Steuben here, and the doors at Treewind. So all I can say, in this short time that I'm allowed, that it's time for you people, and I suggest that we get rid of the superintendent as soon as we can, and...
Thank you, sir.
Some of you board members, too, are to blame for that.
Thank you, sir.
So let's get with it, and let's take care of starting to work on the Peoria Stadium.
Terry C. Knapp?
At your place, I was asked by city leaders to put a manila package, and it contains over a thousand signatures, asking for the removal of Dr., excuse me, of Grenita Lathan, not Dr. Grenita Lathan, Grenita Lathan as superintendent of schools. I think you need to consider those thousand signatures. I also want to say that this is not a matter of Charter Oak. This is a matter of Harrison School. This is a matter of Lincoln School, both who had charges and were written up, basically, minimally, for their violations, even though at Lincoln, there were forty-one students that were improperly tested. At Charter Oak, you chose to send in lawyers to intimidate the kids, the parents, the teachers, and Mr. Witterhour. You did not send lawyers down to Harrison. You did not send lawyers down to Lincoln. Matter of fact, you didn't remove any teachers at Harrison, and you didn't remove any teachers at Lincoln, and you did not remove the principal at Lincoln, but you chose to pick on Mr. Witterhour because of his conflicts with Dr. Lathan, or Ms. Lathan, I should say. And that's the real reason. And when you look at that, you were caught basically with your pants down when somebody foiaed that information and got the information about Lincoln and Harrison. You need to tell these people that are standing up here thinking that there's only one school that violated testing procedures, and this is under Ms. Lathan's watch. And you've got to be wary of the fact that not all has been told to you the truth, and the truth has got to come out. Five-hundred-page report on Charter Oak, no five-hundred-page report? Wasn't that shocking to you on Harrison or Lincoln? That was quoted by you in the paper today, right, Ms. Patel? Right, Ms. Patel.
Thank you. Jeff Atkins-Dutrow?
Good evening. Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, proud president of the Peoria Federation of Teachers and proud English teacher at Peoria High School, the newly air-conditioned pride of the city. I would like to thank board members who took the time to meet with us last week. I've come to realize that board meetings are a rather restrictive environment. An environment doesn't lend itself to intellectual discussion and collaboration between the people out here and the people around the horseshoe, and that's no one's fault. It's just how Robert rules. The small-scale conversations I had, and my executive board had with board members, I think left both parties realizing that we have much more in common than perhaps we thought, and even though that sounds cliche, it's also true. I encourage members of the board to engage not only the union, but parents and the community as well in these kinds of intellectual conversations. I know that a couple of you have begun that process, and I thank you for that. I'm convinced that you know our position, and in fact, the community's position with regard to what needs to be immediately improved in our district. I know enough of you get it. What we will do is now give you the space and time to do what you need to do. Our job will be to continue to ensure a strong foundation. The key to a successful district is ensuring open communication and collaboration at all levels. We expect communication and collaboration. We want high expectations across the board. We are all for true accountability. We long for an environment in which all stakeholders are free, feel free, and safe, not only to address problems, but also to work together to solve them, where we stand together to plan for the future. We took a baby step last week, and we look forward to taking more of those steps this week. Mr. Floyd, I would like to say your apology shows not only compassion, but strength. I commend you for that. And I also want to mention that our executive board voted to endorse the sales tax, which will allow for updated school facilities for students countywide, and will also bring much-needed jobs to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you care to respond, Ms. Wolfmar?
I just want to say again, I think it's been said in meetings, and it's been said around the horseshoe, and it's been in the paper. The board did not want to take the guns away from the SROs. We started a discussion probably two or three years ago about changing the culture of how our SROs worked in the building, and the union has worked with us on that. In fact, there was a committee, I believe, established during the last negotiations. And in that initial discussion, two or three years ago, the question came to the board about taking the guns away, and it was a consensus of the board at that time that we did not think that was a good idea. We did not want to do that. However, it's the state, it's the governing and licensing board...
Police Training Board.
Police Training Board that has told us that we can't do that. That's why, at this point, we've still got our SROs in the building. They're very important. They are still doing their day-to-day stuff as much as they can, and we have contracted with the city to put someone in each of the high schools with a weapon, and we are going to be looking at this ongoing. But it was not our decision to take those guns away. We considered that, or the question was raised a few years ago, and we did not want to do that. that. And even though we felt the culture, we're looking more for, for SROs to work with our students, get to know them better, and be able to deal with them rather than just being policemen. So I just, I just, every time that comes up, I want to correct that, because we are not the ones who wanted our SROs not to be able to carry guns. We did not think that was a good idea at this time, and that was not our decision. So moving forward, we're going to try and find a way of how we can, can work collaboratively with either the, the city or the county and the union or whatever to get what we need in our schools. But safety is very important to us, and this was not something that we wanted.
Ms. Till.
And I just want to emphasize, we were the only district at this time in Illinois who had our own armed security officers. Every other district in Illinois with armed officers contracts them from the city or the county. And so we will be following the model that other districts use. Other districts use very successfully. I don't think anybody wanted this to come down the way it came down. It would have been much better to continue in conversation with our union. But we have had very good discussions with the city and the county, and everybody is cooperating to ensure our children's safety.
Any other comments on that particular issue? Dr. Lathan, anything else you'd like to respond to?
Would you respond to the FOIA and the process as it relates to frequent requesters?
FOIA, the question of frequent, frequent FOIA is not determined by the, necessarily by a particular FOIA, but it's the number of, number of documents, separate categories asked in each FOIA. And it's my understanding that the number of requests made in, in aggregate meets the requirements of frequent foias. The other thing we need to correct is that it does not mean that someone who has fought, has been designated as such, doesn't get responded. They get responded in more time. So rather than, than a response being done normally within five or 10 days, it's 21 days. So all of the foias that were, questions that were properly submitted to the board were responded by the board, but only within 21 days.
Thank you. One of the other issues that was raised, I believe, in the last boarding was the question about the length of time for testing at Charter Oak. And Dr. Lathan, could you respond to that? Because I think there's something that would help create some understanding there.
That was in relation to the NWA testing. The concern was that students had, were sitting for 90 minutes to take the test. Ms. Cushing used a, provided a testing schedule to the teachers. Most students were able to finish, I believe, within 45 minutes. Students that needed extra time did receive the extra time and were allowed to receive a break as a result of the extra time. NWA recommends that you complete the testing in one session, and normally, like I said, most sessions take about 45 to 50 minutes. And so it wasn't that anything was trying to be done to Charter Oak. She used the same system that she had used previously when she was a principal at Franklin. As it relates to previous personnel issues, personnel issues are addressed and decided on by the board based on the information that is presented. We just want to remind you that just because we disagree on how, on what actions are taken does not mean that we're not listening. As a reminder, the situation as it relates to Charter Oak, the information was presented to us like any other normal testing irregularity, and then we made that report. So that's how it started. It did not start with me. It started with information being presented first to a principal and then working its way up the chain. Whether you believe it or not, that is the process that normally happens as it relates to any test irregularities when it's a state testing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any presentations or suggestions by board members as part of the discussion tonight? Ms. Ross, please.
Michael, I've been listening. I kind of just wanted to say to the public that the people around this horseshoe are all people who have educated themselves in certain areas. We have a massive amount of education around this horseshoe. And what you probably don't know is there's a lot of things that go on before we get to this setting. And that means that we ask questions, we get documents, we know about things long before they come here. So I'm a little concerned that we have two lawyers that have gone to school, I don't know how many years. I have a master's from Bradley University. I taught school. We have master's degrees, other degrees. I'm just saying that we all have education, and we believe in promoting education. And, and so, and those of you who know me over the past 12 years, you know that I have stood for children and the rights of children every since I've been on this board. And that's what I stand for, children and parents. And it's just, it's just kind of discerning to hear you all say that we're like led by the nose by a person. I was on the hiring committee that, that chose Dr. Lathan. She didn't come in saying, "We need to make changes." We hired her because, and when we hired her, we said to her, "We need some changes in this district." Because as a counselor, a master's-level counselor, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. I've been through at least five superintendents, and we keep taking steps backwards. We do need people on board, you know, to, to, to move us forward. But I just want you to know that we're well capable of, you know, listening and discerning and making decisions based on good information, being informed people. We don't get paid. We're here because we want to be and because we care. We don't have any status. I don't. I can only speak for myself. I'm not looking to get my name in the paper. As you know, I haven't even been president yet, after 12 years. So what I'm saying is, I just, I am saying, you know, give us some credit, that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. We can learn from you, and we do listen to you, but give us some credit. Thank you.
Any other comments or?
I have a board committee report.
Okay, that, that would be next. Oh, Mr. Crawford, did you want to add to that?
No, I was gonna, I have a policy committee meeting on March 5th. Ms. Kasek and I will be hosting that at 12.
Thank you.
The Parent Teacher Advisory Committee has launched a survey. It is linked on the front page and in Remarkable Times, and we're going to be pushing it out in schools and so on and so forth, talking about student use of personal devices, cellphones, tablets, laptops, Kindles, I don't know, whatever, technology, that very powerful computers that they have in their hands. And what we are trying to get a sense of is how students are using those devices in and out of school, and how parents feel it's appropriate for students to be using those devices, at what age they should start using them, how teachers think they help and hurt in the classroom. So we encourage everyone to go ahead and take that survey. We're just trying to get kind of a general jumping-off point for our discussions about, you know, these suddenly very powerful pocket computers that have come around in the last five years. And we'd just like to get a baseline for starting our discussions about student personal device policies. Thanks.
Thank you. I would, I would ask the administration just for one thing, and that is with the, I believe it's the Maine and university intersection will be disrupted starting fairly soon. It'll probably be still disrupted when we have graduation at the Bradley facility, and we need to think about the traffic pattern there leading to graduation, because that's probably going to be a real mess. So maybe there's an alternative way to deal with that or some other thought, but Maine and university will never be the same, from what I understand, and, and we need to think about what that's going to do. So just as a matter of thinking ahead. Anything else tonight? If not, a motion to adjourn, please?
So.
Thank you.